To the February eighth Douglas County Work Commission Work Session. Today, we're talking about open space. Just as a reminder for everyone here and everyone online. We do not take public comment during our work sessions. That's for informational purposes only, and we don't make any decisions during these times. If you do have public comment on anything you hear, we welcome you to our 5:30 business meeting where we do take public comment. And that would be a great time to share your thoughts with us. So with that, I'll kick it over to Sarah, who will introduce our guests.
We're really excited to talk to you today about our open space planning. And this has been a project that's been in the works for quite a bit of period of time. And and real excited that Kim Crainer, Richie, our Sustainability Manager and Tanya Voight are zoning and codes director are here. Have been sort of our champions internally on this project and I'll turn it over to Kim.
All right, thank you, thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Commission, for for having us today. Now, we have a lot. Okay. Okay, there we go. And we have a lot of our staff here today and a lot of guests as well, and we'll get to introductions. I just wanted to give a little bit of background over the last three years, leading us up to this point. Right after the adoption of Plan 2040, staff were ready to roll with some open space planning. In fact, we were applied for and successfully received in early 2020, a grant from the Sustainability Directors Network and their Partners for Places Program, which is a program literally to bring people together over shared places. And so we received that grant for $26,000 and then received, were able to bring in a generous community match to that toward this program. The urban, I'm sorry, Sustainability Directors Network has very generously and graciously let us go well past the project period to keep that funding. Because we had to make our way through a pandemic and sort out some staffing capacity and also bring in the resources of our consultants, which we have here tonight. And so with all that, we are now ready to, ready to, to roll. So our goals tonight are to share with you our, our plans to make a great plan and show you our directions and and some of our engagement strategies and get your input and and you know, see if there's something that we haven't thought of yet. So with that, Tanya, did you have something to add as well? At this point or later?
Um, I think the only thing I'd like to add is just talking about the ARPA funding that we received. So the Open Space Team was awarded $2.7 million through the ARPA application process. This funding is you will be used for public outreach, public meetings, mapping, land acquisition, conservation easements, trail and parking construction, as well as funding for at least two open space specific projects funded through the HCC. We just want to thank the Commission for making this a priority. And with that, Logan Simpson and their team are available to kick off the beginning of the meeting.
Great, thank you, Kim and Tanya. Thank you, Jeremy, for sharing your screen. I can see the agenda slide. Hopefully, hopefully, everybody else can see that as well. Good afternoon, my name is Andrew Newman. I'm a Conservation Biologist and a Project Manager with Logan Simpson here in Fort Collins, Colorado. We've got a couple other team members here, Jeremy and Daniel, guys like to introduce yourselves?
I'll go ahead. Hi, thank you, Commissioners, I'm Daniel Morgan, I'm a Landscape Architect with Logan Simpson and pleased to be working with the county and the citizens of Douglas County. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, and I always speak later, Jeremy, with, and I'm a Landscape Architect, Environmental Planner. We focus on conservation and recreation plans for counties. And I also have a colleague from Coneflower Consulting there in the room with you.
Sorry, I believe Sarah and Catherine might be there.
Hello, I'm Sarah Bishop. I'm the CEO of Coneflower Consulting, which is a Lawrence-based consulting firm. And I'm so excited to be able to partner with Logan Simpson and Douglas County Sustainability, the Heritage Conservation Council, zoning. Where we've been having such a great time working on this plan so far, and I think there are really great things to come. I'm also excited to introduce my colleague, Catherine Clark.
Hello, everyone. Yes, I'm Catherine Clark, also very thrilled to be working on this project. You can see our lovely pictures up there. Um, yeah, this has been a great process so far, and we're so excited to share with you everything that we've been working on and hope to work on in the future.
And my name is Patty Beatles. I am a council member of the Heritage Conservation Council. And I too am so glad to be a part of this team.
Awesome. Thank you, Sarah, Catherine and Patty. Appreciate you being in there in the room for us today. We also have another team member who cannot join us today, Christina Katcher. She's one of our expert recreation planners. You see her picture down there on the lower left. She's going to be a vital member of the team as well. She has lots of great experience with similar plans like this for open space conservation and planning. So you'll be getting to know her a little bit as well as we move forward. You can see the Douglas County team there on the right, don't have their great pictures because I think you all recognize them. It's been really a great experience working with them so far. We really kicked things, kicked things off here late last year and we're, we're starting to get to know each other pretty well. And I think we've got a good working relationship started and I think we're, we're off on the right foot. I think we missed the agenda slide there a little bit, but I think part of what we're going to talk about is just some of the goals and an overview of the projects. And then we'll dive into a little bit of the information in the draft community engagement plan. And then we'll talk a little bit about the steering, or it's not steering, but Advisory Board or Advisory Committee of community members that will be engaging throughout the project. But just moving forward onto the project goals. I mean, and this is a lot of the information that we pulled, pulled out of what's been given to us from all of the effort that's been undertaken by county staff through what I believe, you know, they refer to and we refer to as phase one of the project that was really putting together the open space charter, which is really providing direction for where this project would like to go. And so now that we're moving on into phase two of the open space plan and program, just a little bit on the project goals, you know, the goals for the plan are to promote a high quality of life related to recreational opportunities in the county and beyond. Also provides some a little more detailed goals regarding sustainability, ecological health, ecological sustainability. Controlling flood damage is also something that's been brought up. And you know, looking at opportunities for open space conservation that will provide these secondary benefits, things like flood damage, control and other ecologically important aspects that come along hand in hand with open space conservation. The plan also looks to maintain rural character. Through the engagement process, one of the goals and one of the focuses is to identify those things about the county that folks value and cherish, and that includes things, you know, beyond ecological resources. It's also agricultural character and heritage, soundscapes, view sheds, those types of resources that you know, maybe not everybody thinks about on a day to day basis when it comes to open space conservation. But we've already heard from, you know, the Heritage Conservation Council that, you know, view sheds and soundscapes were important. So those are the types of things that we'll be looking at as we move forward with developing a plan, kind of trying to look at a comprehensive take on, on all those resources and values that are important to the county and the community members. Also important is preserving community history and multicultural places, gathering places that the community finds, you know, of high value and, you know, providing real benefits to, to those that live in the county. Go to the next slide. So just as an overview, the open space plan and program is intended to help county identify the uses, future uses for open or undeveloped lands in unincorporated Douglas County. And the resulting plan and program will identify and elevate those diverse land assets and opportunities, identify best practices for development or not developing and putting together public and private partnerships. I lost the PowerPoint there. Am I the only one not seeing it?
I think it did drop, but we're pulling it back quickly.
Okay. Well, as we pull that back up, I was just touching on it, you know, really the, the thrust of the plan is to identify, identify, identify those things that are highly valued and then the best practices that we can implement to really conserve those things moving forward and, and enhance those existing opportunities for the community to continue and enjoy and use. So it's a really a broad spectrum look at, at those, those options as we move forward. That's just a real high level overview of the project and the plan at this point. Moving on to the key points, we can skip, go to the next slide. So the plan itself is going, as I mentioned, going to be informed by community values around land use and build on the established community commitments and policies. One important thing is the plan does not result or is not anticipated to result in any immediate changes or new regulations within the county. Any new policy or code changes would need to be adopted through separate motions and processes. The plan itself will create recommendations for new policy and programs. Will identify regulatory tools, potential funding sources for conservation projects, potentially legislative initiatives, partnerships, among other things. The underlying data that will be included in the plan and in the analysis that occurs is going to rely on, on the best available and authoritative data. We don't plan on doing any of the original data collection beyond what feedback and input we hear from the community members during the engagement portion of the project. And as I mentioned, the development of the plan will be guided throughout by the Advisory Committee. And the, this county staff and, and our team have put together a list of local community members with a diverse experience and interest who would likely be interested in participating and helping provide advice as the plan develops. And so we've put a lot of thought into that. My understanding is that invitations to those, those folks who are potential Advisory Board members are in the works or have gone out already. So that is in process. I think the next slide is.
I'll dive into this, Andrew.
Okay, I was just going to hand to you.
Thanks. So we'll just quickly go over our project schedule and where we're at and some of these engagement techniques that we're looking at as well as deliverables. So we've broken these out into four separate phases. As you'll see, as we move on, we're actually beginning at phase two. If phase one was it was essentially the county's initiative to kind of make these connections with the public, start to establish relationships and understandings. And that's now that Logan Simpson's brought on, we're kind of taking that and hitting the road and taking the next steps. So we are currently wrapping up phase one, the project initiative. So we've, we began in December. We've been developing our community engagement plan, which I'll let Sarah and Catherine speak to on the next slide. And then we've been developing some study sessions. We've been having biweekly meetings with the county, diving into existing literature and current plans so that we can understand even a bit more of what's on the books and how we can sort of help the county take that next step. Really looking at the exciting part, which I think you all will be interested as well, as well, is this phase two. So the community vision and plan development. So that's going to go from really today all the way into July. And so some of the engagement techniques that we're looking at are these listening tours. So we're planning on being out in the county in late May. Really engaging the community, rural, urban, tech savvy and not so tech literate. And so to deal with some of those constituents, we're also looking at sort of phone in hotlines, which again, Sarah and Catherine will speak to, online surveys, mailers, community fairs, really trying to meet the public on the ground where they are, as well as kind of the opportunity to integrate a photo competition, which when we met with the, the HCC, they were thrilled about looking at opportunities to really identify some of these visuals in these spaces that that mean so much to the residents. And so in this stage as well, we'll be delivering preliminary go stations. And then we move into phase three, where we're really going to be drafting up this plan and taking what we hear to the next level. And also in that period, we'll, we'll be hosting additional open houses, providing the opportunity for the public to review the draft plan. And then as far as deliverables, yes, that draft plan, providing a consecutive summary, kind of our comment analysis. And then phase four, we really look to kind of wrapping it up with the county and the Commissioners as well. Looking at our advisor, really looking back to our advisory committees and their recommendations, as well as the county Commissioners' recommendations and what we can do to really make this a living, workable document that doesn't just sit on shelf. So with that, I'll kind of pass it on as we get into the community engagement plan. Sarah, Catherine, which, would you mind hopping on?
Yes, thank you so much. All right, well, so yes, Coneflower is very excited to be doing the community engagement aspect of this in partnership with Logan Simpson. And they have been hard at work on taglines and logos. We're not quite there yet, but we will be very soon. I think you're going to love it. And the program and plan values, you know, I think that we are really excited that Logan Simpson chose us because we do know this community so well. It's, and it's a community that we're very passionate about, both Catherine and I. And we're really, you know, we're so honored to be able to do the strategic plan for the Heritage Conservation Council. And so these issues have been sort of top of mind for us. And so when we heard about the opportunity to do the open space plan, we were just, it felt like a perfect fit. But I think for us, we really understand that Douglas County is a county with lots of different audiences in it, right? Lots of different communities make up Douglas County, and we want to engage them all. And so that's going to really require some diverse modes of communication and some innovative methods of engagement. So our engagement goals include inviting input from diverse community perspectives, exploring the possibilities of open space uses with the Douglas County community, identifying common goals between community groups. I think that's a really valuable additional outcome that can come from this project. And then guiding advisory committees and identifying the priority open space areas. And so those are the community engagement goals. Next, we have the Community Engagement Plan, Public Engagement Tools. So now if the Commissioners would just entertain what may sound initially to be a strange request. Um, I would really love it if one Commissioner would volunteer to put their phone on speaker and dial a number for us. Would that be possible? Oh, Commissioner Kelly, thank you so much. We really appreciate that. All right, now here's the number, it's seven eight five two three six seven four one five. And just maybe hold it up so everybody can hear.
Tony, please welcome you to the Douglas County Open Space Hotline for information and updates related to the Open Space Plan Department. Next month, you can dial in to hear new recordings about what's happening with open space planning process. Month's stories are close. Next morning, you hear a little bit about open space planning from Andrew Newman, project manager and senior advisor to Logan Simpson. I protect all landscape and environmental consulting firms supporting the project. Next week, you hear Patty Beatles, board member of Douglas County Heritage Conservation Council and Grand House Manager for the Department of Ecology and Evolutionary Policy at AU. We'll be talking about why open space planning is important for Douglas County right now. Next week, Speaker Tony Voight, Douglas County Director of Zoning and Codes, to help open space planning align with the county's conference plan in 2040.
So you can pick one.
Hey y'all, my name is Patty Beatles and I am a council member of the Douglas County Heritage Conservation Council. The HCC is thrilled to support the development and implementation of an open space plan. The mission of the HCC is to promote and advocate for the conservation of tangible and intangible natural and cultural heritage in the county. Many of the projects we focus on overlap so beautifully with open space. From funding inventories of native pastures to supporting ecosystem restoration and even preserving a natural and scenic buffer around a county park using a conservation easement. Enserving open space for current and future generations of Douglas County residents and visitors is a significant shared goal of our team. We are honored to collaborate with the open space team and we're particularly looking forward to hearing from our community about their visions of open space in the county. Thank you for your contributions to this important effort.
Thank you for calling the Douglas County Open Space Hotline. Got any feedback for us? Press one to leave a message about your experience with the open space program. Want to hear another story?
It was great. Thank you. Well done.
Yeah. Kelly, that was so good. That was so well done. Okay, so that's just our very first version of that. That was a pilot we just threw together pretty quickly. But I think you can see the possibilities. Certainly, a nice thing that this platform does is it sends the voicemails to anyone that we want to share them with, the staff members. It also transcribes them, so it makes it very easy for staff to review those voicemails quickly. There's also a survey component, so you can actually ask a simple question and have people provide a number answer. So like, you could say, like, you know, if you're very pleased with the program, press three. If you're moderately pleased, press two. If you're not pleased, press one. And then people could press that and we could track that. So that's another option with that hotline. But of course, the reason that we're doing the hotline is because we know it's so important to reach our rural residents, some of whom may not have a good internet access. And so we really want to make sure that everyone is able to access this, this program as much as possible and to really be part of the conversation. And other engagement tools that we are thinking about are a digital and a print survey so that we can just get that feedback and aggregate data, really look at trends. And doing a mailer, because again, we want to make sure we're reaching our rural residents. And that could include a sticker about the hotline, right? Kind of got to get the word out. That's one, one challenge of the hotline is it's really fun. We got to also make sure that people know the phone number. So you got to get the, the hotline sticker out. We can also send the event schedule, a link to the website that we're working on. And of course, the survey could go in the mailer as well with a return envelope, so people could send it back. And we're working on a concept, what that we call community fairs, which are a way of engaging the community in discussion. But it's not just an open forum, right? So it controls the way that people are able to give feedback a little bit more than the average community discussion. And so while we might normally have one speaker in the front of the room or a couple speakers in the front of the room, and then the group kind of responding to the speaker, asking questions, that kind of thing. And this will create essentially booths around an open space. And so you can come, drop in whenever you want during the time that the fair is running, move about the space at your own pace in whichever order is most appealing to you. And hopefully, the booths will both be, some will be educational. So we know that we want to teach our community about the benefits of open space, even as we're getting their feedback about what they want to see in terms of open space. And so some of the booths will educate people about open space or tools related to open space. And some of the booths will be ways to get really creative feedback from the Douglas County community. So something even that families could participate in, right? So if you could have children come and draw what they would love to see in terms of open space, right? We want to see ways that we can get everyone engaged, no matter what age, no matter what background. So we think that's a really fun idea and something that we're, we're working on. Logan Simpson had the fantastic idea of a photo contest. I know they've had a lot of success with this in other communities and where people can submit pictures of the spaces that are really meaningful and valuable to them. And so that's something that we hope to do. And there's some different ways we might do that, potentially setting up some photo booths either at the community fair or at coffee shops or other spaces that we know people are coming to. Using some sort of hashtag potentially to make sure we're accumulating all those and people are able to find them. Then the listening tour, I think that that's something that Logan Simpson can really share more about and Kim can share more about. And but we know it's very important that we have all of the consultants, everyone working on this project that's leading the project, really see the land that is out there. We know we have a lot of proud landowners and we want to participate in seeing their land and appreciating it and understanding how valuable it is. And so that's a really important part of the project is to go out and actually see the land with the landowners and demonstrate that we understand the value of that land. And then interest groups, listening sessions, you know, I think we'll be doing focus groups as we get farther towards the end of the, the sort of phase two of the project planning. And I think the reason that those focus groups come in a little bit later is because once we see who's responding to the survey, once we see who's participating in the community fairs, once we see who is doing, you know, the photo booth, we can see who's missing, right? So we can start to get a picture of who's being left out and make sure we are explicitly reaching out to them to make sure that they can participate and give their feedback. Because again, we really want to make sure that everyone is engaged and no one feels left out of this process. Catherine, anything to add?
Great job. I think you nailed it. Yeah.
Good. Well, Commissioners, this might be a good time to get your feedback on, on our, our progress so far on the community engagement plan. Are there other effective methods that you would like to add to this list? Or do you have questions for us about the methods that we're currently proposing? And then I'll speak to the Advisory Committee in greater detail.
This is Commissioner Reed. Well, the hotline was cool, so love that idea. That was fun. I am, I'm just curious actually to go back and maybe I, I missed it in the beginning introductions, but is the Advisory Committee formed? Is it in the process of being formed? Do we, I was just curious, I, there was some references in the phases about Advisory Committee recommendations and whatnot, just curious what the status today is.
So we are, we have actively sent out invitations and are receiving commitments back. But it's, it's very early to give you a composite of those individuals and groups.
Have a goal by what, like, by the end of phase two is your, because I, or later in the phases?
Oh, great question. No, we're actually hoping to convene by the end of the month.
Okay.
Yeah, so want to bring them on very early, very early.
Yes, gotcha. Thank you.
Kim, do you want to speak a little bit to who or what groups are, are being engaged in that Advisory Board?
Oh, just leave it on, I should. So the, the list actually here is, it's, it's obviously, these are very broad categories of, of perspective. But this, these are some of the perspectives that we're aiming to bring on to the Advisory Committee. So obviously, I'm sorry, not obviously, but ecological, excuse me, ecological, ecological research and education, recreation, we realize could be a great opportunity within our county. So that, that's an invitation we've extended producers and landowners from various parts of the county. We really hope to have a rich multicultural lens and perspective on our plan and on our planning process. And then youth was, was an addition that, that we thought would be important as well.
You said that you're going to evaluate which groups did not participate, which makes one think that you have a list of groups that you're expecting to participate. What is that, like, how have you decided what those groups are that you're trying to make sure are engaged?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good question. I think, you know, this is sort of a good list, just in terms of looking at general groups of who we want to make sure we're engaging. But I think we can certainly add more groups. I think, yeah, I mean, I think, I'm hoping that as we continue to move through the planning portion of the project, more and more communities that need to be engagedful appear. And it's sort of, we'll sort of realize these are more groups that we need to meet with and talk with. And that will come out of some of these fairs, for example, or surveys. And so we'll make sure that we're reaching out to them. And yeah, I think I'm hoping that as we just move through the process, that group, that And yeah, I think I'm hoping that as we just move through the process, that group, that list of communities that we need to connect with will expand. And we'll just keep making sure that we're trying to connect with all of those folks as those names come in.
Can I take a little bit of a step back? I know the idea of an open space plan or open space work has been around since 2018 when that conversation began. And it's always been so broad of so many things that it could encompass, that it's hard to kind of understand what our focus might be. And I know that's part of this process too, but even to communicate to the public of why they should be involved and why they should care. Maybe a place to start might be, what lands does the county either own or manage? And is this a plan that would be additive to that? Would it be related to that? So Lone Star Lake and what else do we have? Tanya question probably, or Sarah?
Well, that, I mean, the two recreational areas the county has in the unincorporated area are surround near parts of Lone Star Lake and Wells Overlook. But really, this is about more than the county's space in this, in this process. It's really more about, you know, how do we think about what do we want as a community for all open spaces, which does sound really broad.
Right.
Yeah.
But I wanted to start with that, that we do have some land parcels that we manage. And it was mentioned that the 2.7 million also included potential land acquisition. So I wanted to see if you could talk about what avenues for land acquisition might be available. I know in the past, we've had landowners that wanted to leave land to the county, and then we didn't have a mechanism for that. So what are the thoughts around that? And I also kind of want to make sure that people aren't hearing that the county is going to take my land.
Absolutely.
If you would please address avenues for what that might look like.
And just know that this is a real high level, just to sort of, yeah, because there may be a lot. I mean, I guess I have really tried to focus, tell the group to not get too specific on just land acquisition, because there's going to be a lot of other aspects to this. If people walk into this and think it's a plan for the county to buy land, you've missed the message of what we think open space is. But I'd just say that as a preface to what Tanya can say.
Yeah, I would say that there's a little bit of an alarm when we talk about land acquisition for the county, for the county to then own the land. Because once the county owns the land, then we have all the operation and maintenance behind that. So really, the Public Works Department currently maintains Lone Star Lake and Wells Overlook, and they check the trash. They mow, they plant trees, they do all of the maintenance of trails and the lake health at Lone Star Lake. And that's a lot to manage. You know, there's only just a few, maybe under five employees that manage both of those parks. And sometimes in the summer, especially in over Fourth of July, those are really heavily used and really heavily inundated. So we understand that there's a need, because there's a lot of people wanting to get out to open spaces, and we don't have quite enough to support really the community's needs. So our focus, when we talk about land acquisition, will also really be focused highly on conservation easements. Those easements allow the landowners to still privately own their property, but then puts restrictions on future uses of that land. Conservation easements will allow you to, you know, allow the public onto the land for trails and those type of things. But also might just be private property that really no one from the public is allowed on, depending on the sensitivity of the lands.
I'm very glad for you to cover both those points. Thank you.
But I do think, you know, part of what I would like, you know, small section, I think, is we've been thinking about open spaces. This very broad umbrella of all kinds of things it could be talking about. How do we become more resilient for floods? How do we, how do we plant, you know? Where should we be looking at recreational opportunities in the future? Do we need another county park? Maybe not today, but in 10 years. What would that, where should that be? What are the kinds of things we would like to see on it? So I do think it's more about the planning and visioning of it. So, but it's, it's way more than parks, it's way more than buying land. It's, I, we really think this will be a guiding document, really, to help us understand how we approach some of these issues from a big picture perspective. With that, I guess the only thing I wanted to maybe tag on to the conversation about advisory committee is, my assumption, if a member of the public is listening and is interested in participating, they should reach out to you all to see if they, if they could participate on the advisory committee or how they could participate in this effort. Maybe you're going to get to that later. I just hate to, if folks are interested, we want to try to gather their interest.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
A great way to do that, if you're feeling compelled to reach out, sustainability@douglascountyks.org will come directly to me. And I, I'm sorry, Kim Crenner Ritchie, Sustainability Manager. Happy to talk to you about the advisory opportunities or other creative input opportunities as well.
Feedback, so, and some input, so let me try to give you some. I just want to encourage you, as you think about your advisory board, to consider some folks who may be against the use of open space, you know, and I don't see those on your list, you know, just, especially if they're approached early on to get them involved and hear those, you know, those stories as much. So, you know, I don't want to really generalize, but let's say it's someone from the development community or somebody from the home builders community. Think it's really important not to stack your advisory board with a bunch of heads doing this, right? And so just so you can hear those perspectives. And it also may give an opportunity to broaden, you know, our definition of open space and the benefits for it. And be pretty honest about what some of the negatives might be as well. So I just want to offer that.
And that, maybe somewhat where I was going with some of my questions is to make sure that, that there's enough people involved, that we're also identifying what feels like a threat with this conversation. Because I think if we can identify what feels threatening about it, we can also, you know, speak about that honestly and openly and know who we need to hear back from about that also. So thank you for framing it a little better than I did. When we talk about land access, so when landowners, kind of by definition, are probably more rural people or owning rural land anyway. When we talk about land access, are we talking about specifically having places where people from town can go out and enjoy? Or is this for everyone? Like, can you just talk a little bit about, about that split?
Maybe some, a good example is, and the name is escaping me, but I believe it starts with an A. And of course, I can't remember the exact road, but I can visualize it. Like, there's some, some prairie remnant areas that are around the county. One in particular in my district is coming up. So maybe that's a.
Atkins Prairie.
Thank you, Atkins. It did start with an A, thank you. Or is it Aken?
It's Aken Prairie.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. So I, maybe that's an example of like, that's, there's some public access to, to enjoy that, or maybe with very specific specifications. And if I'm remembering right, is that a Kansas Land Trust easement, Tanya? I'm getting head nods, yes. So maybe, that was just a tangible thought that came to mind.
Yeah, so I think the goal of the program is for all people to have access to land, whether they're in the city limits or the county. One thing, at least that we've had some personal experience, we've had landowners invite us to their property. They've already made trails on their property. They're interested in conservation easements, they're interested in opening their private land to people today. So we have like these grassroots efforts that are happening right now. And that land would be open to anyone and everyone. Another thing that I think is maybe important to think about for the rural community is I think often people think because they have land out in the rural areas, that they have enough land to hike, bike, and do all these recreational activities. A lot of our three and five and even 10 acre lots really are a little bit constricting for really being able to get out and really get vigorous amounts of exercise. And so me, I live out in the county. I actually put my dogs in a car and I drive to the dog park so that my dogs can be off leash, because the county roads, there's too much traffic to be able to put your animals on the roads. And so there are a lot of rural landowners that you would think are getting open space access, but they're really not, and they're driving to other locations to get those safely.
Here now, good. Also sensing a little bit the direction that Commissioner Willie was talking about. Obviously, if a landowner does not want anyone on their property, no one will be on their property. And so I think it's also talking about, this is about, you know, this isn't about taking away property owner rights, it's about trying to have a sense of what do people want? And what do we, and what do all property owners really see as the vision for the unincorporated area? At the risk of, now, this might be a risky conversation. I spent 11 years working in Johnson County and in the manager's office. And their vision of what their unincorporated area looked like is very different than ours. They, you know, I think they had a really strong notion that particularly that entire county is going to become a city at some point, and you're going to be living in subdivisions and strip malls. Is that, is that the vision we have for our unincorporated area? That everything eventually becomes incorporated and is third of an acre plot, lots and strip malls? I'm not going to speak pejoratively about that, it's a choice. But I think trying to have a sense of what is it that we want to do with our unincorporated area and have a vision that elected officials can use for planning documents and guidance, in addition for planning for parks, in addition for allowing landowners opportunities for conservation. And how can they do that? And also, it's conversations that Tanya and I've had about, you know, we've been, we've had a couple of different opportunities related to FEMA buyouts for land that's been substantially impacted by flooding. What does that mean for our community? How do we talk about land use in that area? Should people be going back and putting another house on that again when it's just going to flood? But if we don't, if we buy it out, then what does the county do without? What does that mean? Did I say too much in terms of it? Because I do know it's a very broad topic. So I think, I appreciate Commissioner Willie's desire to have us put a little finer point on it, but, and without going too much down the road.
Another, what I think is a significant perception of both threat and opportunity in the county is about renewable energy and the land space that that takes to have it happen. It's also brought a lot of people out of the woodwork to talk about what they really value about their land and about their neighborhoods in ways that we haven't heard before. So I'm hoping that those are voices that can be captured for this effort, that people will want to engage and be involved in explaining what they, what they like about what we have and what they want to see done about it and what they personally want to do about it for either conservation of biodiversity or flooding access, any of those common topics that were listed prior.
This is a wonderful conversation. I don't want to interrupt it. Is it, would be helpful to show some examples of how we see phase two of this community visioning aspect support with the commissioners are suggesting?
Yes, we're getting positive head nods.
Okay, good, good. I'd second all the things that you said, as well as staff. And, and so one of the important decision points that we'll be making over the next several months and bringing back to the commissioners in a work session would be what, what does that, that future open space program look like? Because you do have landowners willing to donate land. Their only choice today, for the most part, is to sell to a developer. And that's the only type of market that they have to sell into, because agriculture doesn't, isn't as economically viable as it once was. And so how do we provide some alternatives? One of the things that we specifically do is, is focus on helping set up new programs for success. Greeley, Berthoud, for example, in Adams County, these are Windsor, these are all first generation cities and counties that have wanted to begin doing open space. And so they've had to ask the same questions that you're asking, such as, what is our, what are our values? Why do we want to support land conservation and outdoor recreation? And so in Greeley, which has a very diverse community, 34 different languages are spoken in elementary school. But we had to ask boards and commissions, steering committees, virtual public engagement, what is it that they want? And they said that they want nature in urban areas, they want to be able to walk there within five, 10 minutes. They wanted history, they wanted trail connectivity. And we boiled these down into five major themes, strategic moves that they could take in the next five years to become a community connected to nature. So, so step one is confirming what those values envision are. For another small town of only 3,000 residents in Berthoud, they decided that what's important to them through surveys and listening is three, three characteristics, natural areas, agriculture and trail corridors. And you might agree that those are some of your pillars as well. And so then we would try to confirm where are those opportunities to be able to do that, such as along greenways, along lakes, in areas where they could separate from other communities that were, where they were beginning to grow together. A third example would be the Arlands Are Future Initiative, which was a county, and every city, all eight cities within the county, they out pooled their funds together. And they said, we want to understand from everybody across the county and have statistically valid results for every city. Where, where do communities stand on the spectrum between natural resource preservation, which often means locking it up in a jar like you can preserve in your pantry, all the way over to the very active outdoor recreation, which, which always builds public support, but also it can impact natural resource values. And we saw that on the bottom of the screen, every community has a different posture towards them. And then we could customize the right strategy for each community. For example, the town of Vestas Park here has decided that they would not acquire open space, but rather they would, they would focus on recreation facilities. And other communities over here were very, very active in acquiring land. And so we're very interested to see what, what the right approach is there. And so this listening phase that we're into is, is to help define what the right definition is. We can see the county being a convener only and bringing federal, state and nonprofit land trust funds together on the right priority areas. We could see the county as a holder of land, as the owner and the manager. We can also see land trusts be more at the table right now, less than 1% of Douglas County is in a state of conservation. And there really aren't very many land trusts that are active, as much as they might be up in, say, the Manhattan area, where you have the Nature Conservancy and the Trust for Public Land and the Kansas Land Trust, all cooperating to conserve thousands, thousands of acres at no cost to the county. And so how do we mobilize their attention here and find the right mechanisms that work for willing property owners who want to voluntarily conserve their land for the public good? Those, I hope those examples are helpful and we'd love to continue the dialogue. So please keep, keep talking there at the table. Did, did other thoughts come to mind?
Actually, one other thought does come to mind, and that is how many landowners I have known, especially people who are new to land ownership, that have a real conservation ethic, they don't know how to do it. They don't know how to manage the land they have. And so there may be some interest among landowners, large and small, of some kind of a partnership where they could have some, some help and expertise in exchange for some, you know, limited public access a few times a year as they choose. But I think there's a real need for that. And I, I find that as a, as a landowner, that there are times when I just need other outside expertise to know how to manage the problems that I, that arise on my land. And I have a background in that and access to people, but a lot of people don't. So that may be another possible benefit of an open space program that really connects landowners to their own land as well as the rest of the community.
This is Commissioner Reed. Yeah, as we're having this conversation, I just keep thinking about, like, sort of a common thread is, I think there's a real opportunity, in addition to soliciting feedback and trying to, to listen to diverse perspectives and use a variety of tools and methods to seek information, it feels like there's a real opportunity to also think intentionally about how we share information and how we empower folks throughout the county about different things, such as access to our conservation district or other local or regional organizations that might be able to help them problem solve things that they've never had to deal with. Information about flood control and, and, I mean, extreme weather goes so hand in hand with. Information about flood control and, and I mean, extreme weather goes so hand in hand with our climate action plan. Um, sort of in progress too, at the same time and being able to think about how to really create. Sort of synthesize information and create digestible empowering information to give to residents, um. About different things. And then, you know, so on and so forth with both, um, cultural inherited sites, which you know, we have some progress with that. And there's an app where you can go on tours, um, eventually when there's a process for people who are interested now in donating land and having those conservation easements. How are we relaying information to the public about use of those lands and the sort of ethic behind using somebody's, um, land and, um. Conservation principles. And I just want us to think about information in a, in a two-way, um. Sort of format.
I could envision the possibility of some kind of a, a youth green team where youth are possibly paid but trained, uh, to. To have, you know, an impact on the land where, that they could be hired to do either for, um, green infrastructure kinds of work in smaller spaces. Or just general conservation work in larger spaces. It could be helped tie, tie a multi-generational aspect. Cause I know as, as landowners age, there, it's, it's hard enough to keep up with, with what we have. In addition to other life things going on and in addition to aging, that that might help, um, create some across generational bonds.
You, I appreciate you mentioning that, Commissioner Willie, because one of the things I mentioned to, to Kim and Tanya when we talk is particularly because of. I know some four Hers and some environmental studies kids, um, and so how can we, you know, engage them in this process too? I mean, really this is their, their future land. So how do we engage them in their voices, but also can we put them to work? Um, and so what are some ways to do some of those things and how do we have those conversations? But I, I, so I'm really think this is a really great opportunity. We, sometimes at the county, we don't reach out to young people as much as, as we should. And so I'm hopeful that we can learn how to do some of that a little better in this process. And Kim's got some great contacts for those things. And I think there's, the, the possibilities are limitless.
One fairly new example of a group that is doing that is in Wyandotte County and it's Groundworks NRG. Uh, they have a youth green team that does, um, green infrastructure work in, uh, city-owned lots within the unified government territory.
Thank you. Um, I, I'm also curious what the sort of, this is probably, um, a question best for you, Kim. The, um, the discussion or interplay with our food policy council. And thinking about how to really strengthen our local food system and the importance of being able to preserve agricultural land and, you know, make. From my perspective, like, uh, make it sustainable for, for landowners and producers, right? And also, uh, ideally really serving our local food system that remains really strong despite any things like disrupted supply chains or. Or whatnot. Um, so just curious if there's been much conversation and, and it's a little bit tangential, but. And thinking about how to help sort of with resiliency for food producers out in their open spaces.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so given my direct tie to the food policy council, they have been hearing me talk about this quite a bit. And, um, so it's on their radar, is, is coming. And, um, I will certainly be seeking their input, um, and advice. As we get toward, um, any drafting phase, well, even before we get toward any drafting phases, but input phases. So I could, I could see us having, um, potentially going to them just to have a session if, if they'll make time for us to talk just about open space values.
I'll throw out one other potential connection, and that would be our, our rural cemetery boards, which are mostly occur in the west half of Douglas County. But that is another access to first a group of people that care about their community and their, um, areas. But also it's a bit of a model for some have public access, some have not public access, uh, and yet they all have a vital role. So that might be another, another connection point.
When you read, I'd be happy to talk about next step, but go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, just checking where we are. We, it is almost five o'clock, which we usually take a break. Uh, do you have more presentation? Now's a good time.
Great. Well, just to close then, uh, and again, for anyone who's listening online. We are very interested and anxious to, to build connections with, with you and to, uh, develop a number of. Of, uh, different groups who will contribute to the plan, whether through the formal advisory committee. Uh, which will serve as a sounding board for the plan and, and work together towards a cohesive goal. Or through our trail walks and river, uh, talks, we would want to, uh, hear from you. We've also found as, as the commissioners mentioned, how helpful the chambers of commerce and the Board of Realtors and tourism agencies. Are in, in, uh, making this a plan that everyone is excited and, and confident with. So let's keep thinking big as we move forward in the next stage. And we appreciate very much your feedback, uh, for, that you've given us so far. And so some of the next steps then is, uh, we will, you'll see a, a launch of the brand and, and speaking points. We'll hold our first meeting with the advisory committee. You'll see a new website, you'll see the hotline be built out. This is developing questionnaires and, uh, and we'll advise. The commissioners each time that, uh, that something's going to be deployed so that you can be able to speak to it. You'll see us at upcoming community events. And then again, those trail talks and river walks will be more and more important. Here as the weather warms up. So thank you very much for your time and dialogue and, and please let us know at any time. If, uh, if we need to make a, a subtle course correction.
Come with Commissioner, see if we have any more questions or comments.
Just one final question. Um, the comment about, uh, the Manhattan area and the land trusts there, I appreciate that. Cause, um, it's certainly a concerted effort to have that many folks coordinating. Um, so that leads me to wonder, maybe Riley County is an example, or there are other regional areas around us that you all have. Had conversations with, looked to, we saw a couple of examples from, from this firm in Colorado, anything else? Um, in Kansas or near one of their northeast Kansas border states. Um, I was just wondering if there's anything else going on. I'm also thinking about that in terms of sort of recreational, um. Uh, paths that, that are regional and, um, you know, di- between different counties that. That might come close to connecting or, or just shared goals with surrounding counties.
The, um, counties that we're aware of that have some type of open space type planning or are very active with conservation easements. Even if they don't have an open space plan are Riley County and Johnson County. Um, I believe Sedgwick County does have, um, conservation easements, but doesn't have an open space plan. Um, so we've actually reached just a little bit broader regionally and we've, um, reached out to Johnson County, Iowa. They are very well known for their agricultural programs and they've done some really unique things with land use planning to incorporate, incorporate, um, development. Um, back into their communities in a smarter way with agri-hoods, um, with greater conservation requirements. Those type of things with, um, different types of planning tools to bring development back to their communities. Um, in a way that, um, still protects agricultural and working lands. So that they've really, we, we, um, plan to do actually a trip there, um, and meet with their staff and kind of see what they've been doing. They've been, um, had an open space program for many years, probably over 20 years. When we met with Logan Simpson, one thing that was really shocking, um, that they said to us is Douglas County is about a decade behind everyone else. And you have a lot of catching up to do. And so we're, we're just still kind of reeling with that concept and, um, trying to catch up as fast as we can.
It's, Tanya, one of the ones you didn't mention that, and I've talked to a Shawnee County Commissioner about that, they have a trail plan. That goes right up to that Douglas County line. So we might want to reach out to them and, and understand. I don't know that they have easements for it, but I know they have plans for it. All right. Commissioner Willie? No, okay. Commissioner Reed? Okay, just checking. All right, last call. All right, great. Well, thank you very much for joining us today and some very exciting, um, updates and. And real potential. It's disappointing to hear that we're far behind, but. I, I know we've got the team to catch up as fast as we can. So thank you for all your work. We will adjourn into our, um, 5:30 business meeting.